About Kubernetes. Talked about lot of items. Now, there is few item like replica set, sorry. Uh. There are few items like your ingress and all which is pending. So I'll take it later. But before doing all those things, I will start with a new topic which is. A new topic which is Helm chart. So what is a Helm chart and why and how I am going to use Helm chart? So Helm chart is something which is very similar to your Docker hub. So what was Docker hub if I just remind you about that? So when we talk about Docker containers, okay? So I can create my own containers or I can use containers which are already present. Similar way in Helm also, there is a place called or in Kubernetes also, there is a place called Helm hub. Now Helm hub is very similar to Docker hub and here you can go ahead and keep your stuffs. Like what images? Uh. Anji, I'll uh I'll take that thing again, but there is one topic pending. I'll take that thing again, hold on for some time. Okay. So when I start using Docker hub, I can use the images which are already available. Or I can use the images which I would like to go ahead and. Create my own. So both ways it works on my Docker hub. Similarly, today also I will be trying to do the same thing on artifact hub or helm up. So for that, the first thing is I need to install help. So help installation. So if I come and say helm install. It will tell me that helm can be installed on all the places. If you can install it on your local machine, you can install it on a Mac machine, Windows machine. Helm can be installed anywhere. So there are various commands. Depending on what you want to do, you can install helm charts. Okay, like we said Docker images, here we will say helm charts or if you want, you can come here installing help. And here you will see there are options like you can do from the help project. You can take the binary version. You can do it from the script. So this is what I am going to do. Then you can run it through a package. macOS, you can use home brew. If you are using Windows, you can use chocolatey. If you are using Windows, scoop is another command. If you are using Debian or Ubuntu, then APT is the command. Then Fedora, so depends like what operating system are you working with? Helm is compatible with everything now. Uh. Wait a second. Uh. Sorry, because last time you said you'll do the deployment today. Yeah, man, but I have. Some problem in the deployment, so I have parked it aside. Let me start helm. The deployment part I will be doing it again. So just give me some time for that. You are starting a new topic. Yeah, definitely it is a new topic. Uh. Please share the recordings. Yeah, I'll share the recordings, Roshnavi. Uh. I think I've already shared it, but in case I have not received it, please ping me in the group. I'll share it again in case I have not received it. But I believe it is shared anyhow. So as I have Docker hub, similarly I have Helm artifact or Helm hub. As I go and keep my Docker images, here I will keep my helm chart. How is it going to change my life or how is it going to help me? So to understand that, the first thing what I am going to do is I am going to go to my interactive Kubernetes shell. So interactive. Kubernetes shell. Kubernetes shell. Let me come here and say, let's go and get a shell. Let's see. Let's get into the shell. Will it allow me to run anything? No, here it is not allowing. Let me go back here, here. Okay, so this is what I am trying to work with. Come down. I can say continue. This thing is what will appear for me. Let me go back. This thing pop up. Came launch. Start. Let's wait for this to load. I don't know why is it so slow. I can come here and say mini cube start to start my application. Mini cube. Okay, now remember it is giving me two core CPU and two four six zero MB of. Memory and the disk space is some nineteen GB. Okay, just remember these things. Because when I will run some monitoring tool on this, I will show you that, okay? So let it come up. Now, the first thing what I have to do is I have to install help. To install helm, I'll come here and I will take these set of commands. I'm going to run these set of commands to install helm. So this is the first command. Now make sure that you install helm three because helm two and all are outdated. Many a places you will get helm two, which is not the right way to work. Helm two had something called tiller, which was a big security flaw. So. Wherever ninety nine point nine percent it will not be present, but by chance if you get helm. Uh. Two, please make sure that you do not use helm two, okay? So as of now, if I start here and say helm, it will say helm not for me. It is not that. So I will try to install this. So I will simply go here and run this command which I took from internet. And then the second command is this guy helm SH. Then let me run this. Paste. Now if you do ls minus L, you will find the script here. Get helm dot SH. So you have to run the script, get helm dot SH. And with this, the helm thing will get installed on your local machine. Once it is done, you can come here and simply say helm version and it will show you the version of helm. The most important thing is it should be version creep, not less than that. Okay, now let me say I have to start with helm, but I don't know anything about helm. I just know that it is used to make packages or it is like Docker hub. So what will I do now is let me go ahead and start with helm. So to work with anything, the best thing is you come here and say help. So when you run this guy, you will see that these are the commonly used helm commands. And if you go in deep, you will see that most of the commands are very similar to what I have used in my Docker hub like. Docker get Docker list, Docker pull, push. Docker show Docker status. So these commands are more or less very same, not exactly same, but more or less they are same. So these are the commands which I am going to use now. When I have to use helm, okay? The first command which I will be interested in is helm repo. Helm helm list repo helm list. Repo means if there are some repositories or help repositories, then. Show me. So helm list repo or helm repo list. H E helm repo list. Okay, so if I run this command, helm repo list, it says there are no repositories to show. So basically, when we work with Docker hub, what we do? We first pull the image and then we start our work. I am planning to do something like that here also. So let me say I want to go to helm hub and I want to start my work with NGINX. So I will look for NGINX. This is what I find. Come here. And here it says how to install and all those things, but I am not interested in installing helm and all. I am interested in how to work with this. So it says in Azure, it is already ready. I am not interested in Azure. I am interested in this guy. So it says first do a helm repo add. Means it means whatever is there in this helm chart. So this helm chart is coming from Bitnami NGINX. So Bitnami is a company, NGINX is a software. So this helm chart is coming from Bitnami NGINX. I want to download that and keep it the name as my repo. Then I say helm install whatever you name you want to give. And this my repo and inside that this is NGINX. So this is what I want to do. So first, let me just go ahead and add the repo. So whatever you want. First, you have to add that report to your local. Okay, so let me just maximize this guy. Is this? I think helm required. This thing. Now it says my repo has been added. Now once this my repo has been added, you need to. Install this or you need to run this. So what's that command? So the command is helm. Install NGINX. This is what I want to copy. Paste this guy. And it is installing this NGINX for me, which is inside. My repo and the name of the deployment it has given it my release. Now if you see here, it is my release, it is deployed, the namespace is default. The chart name is NGINX. So there we say image, but here we say it is helm chart. And then the version and all is there. Now you will say what's the big deal? Why are you doing this? So let me show you what is the big deal. So if you come here and say cube C T L get all. So now I can see with this, I got everything. I got a deployment. I got a replica set. I got a service and I got a. Port. Now, if I had to do it from scratch, okay? Then first I will write a deployment file, then I will link it to my service and then I have to write everything. Okay, so when I was working with this guy, so we were working with this guy, right? In my GitHub repo, I was showing this thing to you. Okay, test master class. So I was creating this, uh, what you say, this voting app which we were talking about that day. It can just come down here. Microservices. Now for you, when you practice, this code is written for you, right? This entire thing is written for you. So you simply go ahead and say cube C T L apply and then you apply everything. But assume a scenario where you are the only Kubernetes developer and you are asked to write everything. So it will be very difficult for you to write everything from scratch. Not only this will be the thing, there can be secret config managers, demon set services. So there will be hundred different items which you need to write. Suppose you are very good, you have written everything, okay? But to write everything, it may take two days for you, okay? Now once it is written, okay, now your colleague says, you know, I am also trying to do same thing. Can you do it for me also? So you have to go and do it for him also. Now after ten days, your manager comes and says that you know whatever you did in depth was okay, but we have to now do it in fraud and also in UAT. It means whatever you are doing here, the reusability thing is a question. Why? Because I am doing it in my local and then everything I am doing from scratch. So what I will try to do is I will try to automate the process or whatever I have. I will try to automate that and I will try to put it in a helm repo or helm chart. And this helm chart I will put it in my. Helm hub. So anybody who has access can simply login, take that thing and get started. So here, if you see, I just came here and ran some three, four commands. So if I simply come here and say history. You can see I started my Kubernetes environment. I installed helm and here I checked the helm version. Now from here, if you see, I just did a helm repo add and then I did a helm repo install. So with these two commands, I almost got my application up and running. So get off. So I almost get my application running. Three, one, nine, four, three is where it is running. Let me just check three, one, nine, four, three. Three, one, nine, four, three. And you can see your application is running. Now suppose you don't need this application anymore. What do you need to do? So there is a delete command here. You have to simply come down here. And you have to uninstall the chart. How helm delete. My duties. And let me come here. And put it here. And you will see the content has been deleted. Come here, clear everything and say cube C T L get all. So you will see that everything has been deleted. So using helm chart is very easy, okay? Whatever you need, suppose you have to create a helm chart, okay? So whatever you need, you put it in a helm repository, which I will teach you. How to create your own helm chart. So whatever you need, you put it in one single place, make a helm chart out of that and put it in your helm hub. The moment you put it on helm hub, it becomes reusable. So any person who wants can simply go to helm hub. From there, first he will add the repo, then install the repo and start using it. And without any difficulty, he can use it and when his work is done, he will simply go ahead and delete it. So here I can see with a click of button, I have something which is very much reusable. And I can maintain different versions of that, okay? In case there is a problem, I can roll out and redeploy or undeploy the changes. Okay, now I'll open it for questions. If anyone has any questions, I'll take all of them. So let's go one by one. Yeah, please, if anybody has a question.
This is for mainly for moving from your development to UAT or UAT to prod, this will help, right? Your entire application may be in the helm.
Yes, this thing which you are talking about is one of the use cases, okay? Not only this, there are many other use cases. So think of a code reusability. Yes, from development to broad development to UAT, definitely yes. But many other reusabilities can be there. Let me say you have implemented something in project X. And some team member in project Y is asking that. So you can do that also.
Okay. Because it is like we can take the backup of like the complete project we did and then we can. Yeah, upload in the helm helm library, right?
You can do that.
We can use it as a backup, right? Like if anything happens, we can just add one.
See, one thing I will tell you here that even if you keep your code in GitHub, there is no problem. The backup will always be.
Yeah, because there is no need of doing the apply, right? Directly it is running the application, anything.
It is not directly running, right?
If you see after giving the command, one command like uh.
After giving the command, you don't have to go ahead and say that I want to apply and all. The moment you say helm install now, it will install everything for you.
Okay. So normally we will use these cases, these type of cases in the real time, not creating the deployment next.
Again, it will depend. It will depend. See, if it is a ready-made solution, so I'll 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 give you one example in some time now. Let me say Kubernetes node monitoring or Kubernetes cluster monitoring. Every other company will do that. So we have a standard for that and every other company uses that. But let me say your company is doing something which is not very common. Okay, then you will have to go ahead and create your own helm chart. So I will show you in tomorrow's class how to create your own helm chart. But for today, I will show you that how you can easily monitor your Kubernetes cluster if you are using helm and helm chart. Okay, there will be some common use cases which everybody will do and there will be some uncommon use cases which you and your company will only be doing. So it works both ways.
Because this helm, if we use this helm, then there is no requirement for Docker, right?
No, 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 wait it, hold on, hold on. See, again I am saying. The actual work will still be done by Docker images only. Whatever you do, see, the hierarchy is something like this. You have container, okay? And I was having problem in managing these containers. Container. I was having managing a problem in managing the containers. So I went to Kubernetes. Then in Kubernetes, I came to know that I have to write manifest files. Then I thought if I have to write so many manifest files, can I just? Do something said I don't have to write. So from there you go to help. Okay, then on top of that, which I will be teaching you later is Steve. Steve's sidecar. So it is like this. So you solve one problem, then you see that can I enhance that? So still if you see in the background, all the work the container will only do. Okay, the hierarchy you understand. Started with containers, but container management became a problem. So I went to Kubernetes. When I started working with Kubernetes, I have thousands of manifest file, secret, config, deployment, service. All has to link with each other and every time I have to write it. So I have written it and I have put it in helm chart or helm hub. Now I am using helm hub. Once my work, I I'll tell you what will be the problem and then I'll tell you how Steve can solve that problem. So this is how the hierarchy goes. So container is not outdated.
Uh. So but in the also, we need to write all the files, right?
According to the one time now, even if you write, that is one time.
Means like for the UAT prod, like there are different environments, we need to change everything, right?
No, not everything is, see, not everything will change. So uh I will show you, there is something called parameterized. Uh. Values. So you just pass the parameter like in dev you pass the parameter. Yep, in UAT you pass as UAT. So it is, see, hard work is a good thing. But in IT industry, hard work is not appreciated. If you do smart work, that is appreciated. So in Docker Kubernetes, we will always try to do the smart work and show you smart ways of working.
Okay, so how how the Docker is the base for the helm then regarding the images we are pulling in the helm, what is the dashboard?
When when you are, when so so tomorrow anyhow, the agenda is for tomorrow only. I'll take it tomorrow only. But when you write a helm chart. So when I am saying helm chart, inside that helm chart, you have manifest file. Manifest file, when I say it is a deployment file and you know in the deployment file, I write my Docker images. I keep the location of the Docker images. So inside anyhow, container is only running. You got my point, right?
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So we will give the reference of Docker image kind of base.
Correct, kind of. See. I told if you want to deploy this application, we deployed this application. What we did, we wrote all these things, you did not write, but I was the one who was writing all these things. Once we wrote all these things, we linked deployment and service. If there is a secret or a config map or a demon set, all these things will link together and we ran it. Okay, but we had to write all these things and we had to run it. Probably in a different situation, I have to change everything. But once you. Make it a helm chart, it is kind of a generic thing. Anybody can come and use it similar to your Docker hub. Once you create a custom image, you can put it in the Docker hub. Anybody who wants, he can take it like that. Similarly, here also I am doing helm of kind of thing where I am putting it. I I will put in the helm hub. As of now, I am just using this. I am just telling that in this artifact hub or helm hub, somebody has put the image of EnginX and I am using it. But in the class tomorrow, I'll show you that I am creating my own content and I am putting there.
And by default, it is getting the port exposed, like we are getting that port exposed for the outer world to access that. Like how it is taking like, is it a, what is a load balance or kind of or port exposed?
It it will depend what is written inside. So if you want to check that. I have already deleted it, but when you are practicing it and you want to check that. Do cube C T L get all, okay? Then go inside your service. So how do you go inside your service? Cube C T L edit. Okay, edit and then go ahead and edit your service. Means you go inside your service, you will be able to see. See here. So you will see here at the bottom that this content which is getting created for me. This is the default one. So it is showing cluster item. So somebody has written this manifest file, right? So this manifest file for me is coming from my. Inbuilt stuff. So when you do that apply thing now, you will see that the manifest file is being generated, something like that.
Okay, we can choose even like I need only load balance and not port exposed. We can choose.
You can choose, you can apply the changes. So anything you can do. In fact, the example which I will be showing now will, I will show you that only. Okay, now why?
Because, yeah. Uh. Because mainly like what is the purpose we are using helm and why it is required?
See, unlike an article, we do have all the. Again, I'll repeat. I think you have joined late. I'll again repeat. See, generally what happens, suppose I am asking you to deploy an application, okay? You will write deployment file, service file, then uh config uh secret file. A many, sorry, uh config map, you will write ten other things, okay, namespace and all those things you will write. You wrote everything. It took around two days for you to write. Now the same thing you have to do it in fraud, you have to do in the UAT. Then again you have to write it. A team member from a different team is asking for those things. Again you have to give it to him.
That.
It is like a template.
Your set. Sir, my question, why we we write again, uh, we have uh pull our image or files from Docker hub?
Can you give me a guarantee that the requirement in project A and the requirement in project B will be same?
So sir, if we uh pull, post our uh files on helm. So that will be also same, how it is difference.
That does not work that way. See, working with images is at a very low level, okay? And working with deployment, it has as a high level. Now, let me say I have to change at deployment level. It is a very small change for me. But if I have to change something at image level, it will be a very big thing. So suppose I have to run this code. Suppose I have to run this code, okay? I have to take this code and give it to the other developer. On top of that, he has to make ten changes and he will have to run. But if there is a helm chart available, okay, there is a ready-made solution available. A very good example of that can be, every other team wants to monitor the application. The the helm application, sorry, the Kubernetes application or the Kubernetes cluster which is running. Every other team will do that, okay? Now assume that somebody in your team has already done that. So what will you prefer? Will you prefer to take the working version of that or you will want to take the raw code? In the raw code, there can be ten problems which he has solved at his level. The same problem which which I started with, when I told you Docker. I told when when you talk about container, somebody is putting everything together and giving to you. But if you go ahead and write your own code, there can be hundred issues, version issues can be there, environmental issues can be there. So my simple purpose here is that a working code, I will package everything together as a helm chart. And I will share it with whoever wants. So let me say company A, company B, company C. All of them want to do monitoring. They can simply take my helm chart and they can install it without any additional headache. Now if you want that, yes, I will do it from scratch. Yes, you can do it. There is no no problem in doing from scratch. But if a solution is available, why should I not use the solution? So the sole purpose of helm is to enable reusability, okay? To deploy changes with minimal change. But if you say, no, I will do with the code. You are you are most welcome. You can go ahead and do with the code also. There is no one stopping you.
Okay, okay, sir. Sir, we we can't figure out now what's the difference in in the helm and other. Uh. Further, we can, you.
Okay, you tell me, why do I create a Docker hub image? Why do I create a Docker hub image? A custom Docker hub image. Why do I create that?
We have to not, uh, we we configure our, uh, on, uh. If we want want to configure our, uh.
Come on, man, you should know all these things at this point of time. I am not asking you a theoretical.
Actually, can I speak in Hindi?
I can accept it, yeah. Actually, how Docker images frequently update to helm charts? It's automatic?
No, it is not automatic. See, if there is any change, for example, let me say. As of now, give me, I'll give you an example.
Suppose my my images in this year.
Okay.
Then how it is a.
Then you have to update your, then you have to update, update your chart. You have to update your chat and see. So that's why I was keeping it for tomorrow. I don't want to get into that, but still I'll show you that. Give me one minute. You have to update your chart and see. So that's why I was keeping it for tomorrow. I don't want to get into that, but still I'll show you that. Give me one minute. Give me one minute.
In real time, we use helms only.
Yes, in real time, we will use Helm only because nobody, see, there is a common saying. Nobody want to reinvent the wheel again. The wheel was invented long time backs, right? We don't do same work on top of that. We go ahead and do advanced things. So we have done the Helm. Or we have done the packaging together. Now nobody will want to do it again and again. But in case, suppose in case I have to make changes. I will write something like this chart dot Yaml. This is one of the Helm chart which I will be talking about tomorrow. So this is my chart dot Yaml. And I have something called template. Okay, in template you have to go and change. So this is the template which I am using here. So if you say that my version has changed, then definitely I have to go and change this. If this is outdated, I have to change this.
Can we use as a environment variable?
Yes, you can. In fact, you can see here, there are some environment variables also which are used. Values dot replica set and this value is coming from my another file which is.
Yes, sir, sir, Docker have custom emails. Uh we we can create a. Email uh our own requirement and we have to um not uh create any. Container from the scratch and.
Exactly, the same thing we are doing here also. The same thing we are doing here also. I told you that when I start my work or when I started my work, I was only working with containers. But I saw that when I was working with containers, I had management issues. Okay, I was not able to manage it. So I went to Kubernetes. As and when I went to Kubernetes, the workload started increasing. I had many manifest files to manage. Five deployment files, twenty service file, thirty uh uh secret files, like this, I have so many files to manage. So I don't want to manage everything manually, so I went to Helm. Now Helm is managing everything or Helm chart is managing everything for me. Now still it has a problem, so I will go to Istio. So this is the track. Okay, yeah.
So based on the requirements, we'll change and we'll apply.
Exactly. Just like your Docker image, when you create, suppose you have a requirement today. According to that, you have created a Docker image and you're using it. Everybody in your team is using it. But assume a scenario that that image has to be updated. So what you will do, you will again write a Docker file, make changes and build the image and again push it. Then people will start, let me assume, earlier people were using version one. Now they are supposed to use version two. So obviously, everybody will make their changes. Same is here also.
Because Helm Helm chart and then Helm hub, hub we'll call it as.
Helm hub is like Docker hub. It is a place where you're storing.
Terms, terms, terminology I'm asking like Helm Helm chart and Helm hub, right?
So Helm is the tool, the file which you write, you say Helm chart. And the place where you store it, you say Helm hub, Helm hub or even artifact hub. Helm hub, people also say artifact hub.
So is it is it common like Docker hub or?
No, 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 Docker hub, Docker hub is left behind, don't, don't.
No, 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 for Docker, we'll take the Docker basis, right? For Helm hub, artifact artifact hub is the thing everyone will use or.
Ah, everybody will use artifact hub only and in the artifact hub, you will have charts. So if I come back here now, this guy.
Yes, yes, okay. And this, in this, the image is decided by Enginix, right? Like how like suppose I want different different images means.
Then you have to customize it. See, at any point of time, wait, I'll show you one thing. See, in the morning class, I created one, so I'll show you that. So I'm logging in with my GitHub. So I am or I have created one, control panel. See, this is my my Helm hub Helm hub image, which I have pushed it thirteen hours ago. Is in my morning class I have done it. So if you see here, it is taking the code from here. Okay, and it is creating a Helm chart out of this. And with this Helm chart, anybody can go and use it. So if anybody wants, I'll show, I don't want to get into this, but because the questions are coming, that's why I'm going here. So I can go ahead and transfer this or I can delete this or I can edit this.
So it is coming from the GitHub, GitHub link. So if we update anything in the GitHub, they this.
No, automatically it will not happen. You will have to package it. So there's a complete process for that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so to summarize everything, I will say that there are many companies which have common requirement, okay? So they can come to artifact hub and take those components. Let me say, I come, mean there are almost all companies who want to implement Jenkins. So I can simply come here and say Jenkins. Again, and what is Jenkins, it will talk about, and then it will tell you how to use this image. So you can go here and you can read through this. Again, repo add, repo update, and then repo install or Helm install. And then it will be installed and you will get a Jenkins environment and you can start your work. In case you want to, if you made some changes, you do Helm upgrade and you upgrade your changes. So any, anything which you want, okay, anything which you want is available here in Helm hub. Let me say, I'm looking for Ansible. There is a guy who is looking for Azure related something. Azure has a Helm, Azure has a vote, this thing. So some somebody is looking for AWS related thing. They will find AWS X-ray. Again, depends what kind of work you're doing. Somebody is interested in, let me say, he is working with the. Uh, he is working with, let me say, Grafana. Grafana. So you see Grafana. Okay, so everything what you want, just like your Helm, just like your Docker hub, you'll find it here also. Okay, so two kinds of requirement can be there. One, a common used requirement which is used by everyone. Or the second requirement can be a custom requirement where the company has a specific requirement and they want to work with that. So if a company has a specific requirement, you have to create your own Helm chart. If it's a generic one, you can just pick it and start your work, okay? But under both circumstances, you will be able to reuse it. Means create it once and use it N number of times, okay? One such example can be monitoring. There are thousands of companies who use the same monitoring application. Okay, so how does this monitoring application work? So what they will do is, there is a standard monitoring application. So there are few tools which we will be discussing. I'll not be doing today, but we'll just discuss about these tool. So there are tools like Prometheus. Right, one such tool is Prometheus. Another such tool is Grafana, which we will be discussing tomorrow. Grafana. So these are some tools which I'll be using to monitor my Kubernetes application, like what is running. What is the CPU utilization, what is the disk utilization, what is the API server doing, all those things. Again, can I use a different? You can hold up, hold up, hold up. Can I use a different tool? Yes, I can use a different tool. So whatever tool you want, you can use it. Let me say, there will be another guy, he will say, sir, I want to use Nagios. Nagios. I have Nagios. There will be some other guy, he will say, sir, you know, in my company Kafka is getting used. So I have Kafka. So whatever you want, the image is present, but these are the standard images. In case you want to customize it and make changes, you will definitely have to write your own Helm chart. So in my example, which I'll be doing tomorrow, I'll be working with Prometheus and. So when I say Prometheus, so Prometheus is a free software, okay? And it is used for event monitoring, means whatever activity is happening inside your cluster, it will monitor that. And it will send alerts. Alerts are like email alerts or something like that. It will send you an email alert and the good thing is that it can record real-time metrics, okay? But the problem is that the matrix which is collected is collected in a time series database. Now this time series database is not very human readable, okay? So if you just want to see the logs of Prometheus, you need to learn a language called Prometheus Q L. Which is not a very human readable language, which I will say, because I even find difficulty in reading what is written here. So you can go through and you can find how does a prompt Q L looks like. The prompt will, the prompt Q L. So the actual is prompt Q L. Okay, so prompt Q L is quite difficult. So you can, if you want, you can try that, but I will not recommend to try because it is very difficult and not that. Uh like interesting or needed also, okay? Something like this will be there. So not that great, okay? So if that is not that great, then what is the alternative I have? So the alternative what I have is Grafana. So when I say Grafana. It is a tool which will be used for visualization. Again, this tool is tool is free of cost. So it is a multi-platform, open source analytics and interactive visualization web application. So it is multi-platform. So whether you are working on Azure, AWS, Kubernetes, G C P, wherever you are working, you can use it. It will do analytics and it will give you interactive visualization, means it will give you graphs, bar, charts and all. And it will give you all these things in a real time. So if you click on this now. You will get the dashboard, something like this. And this dashboard is very much soothing to the ear eyes and anybody who wants to monitor the application, let me say he's doing L one, L two support. Is not very much aware of all the functionalities of DevOps. Still, he can monitor all these things. So this is what we will be covering in tomorrow's class. Okay, now let's go ahead with questions. Why don't you pull Ansible image from Docker hub instance? Because now I am done with Docker. I know that Docker has ten problems. I don't want to go back. I want to move ahead. So in real world, you will be using Docker hub. Or your images which are there in Docker hub, but not directly, but via Kubernetes, okay? What is Go programming? Go programming is Google coding language. So Go lang. See, there are many applications which is written by Amazon, sorry, written by AWS. So they use a language called Go lang. So it's a separate language altogether. Go lang is a Google language. So Go is statically type compiled, designed by Google. So it's a Google language, also known as Go lang. You can see Go lang, Google language. So you can see the applications of Google are written in Go lang. Can we use Power BI for usual, huh? Again, visualization can be done in many ways. So again, it it can be, visualization can be done by Power BI. Power BI is a tool. More mostly people use Power BI if they are inclined toward Microsoft or they are using Azure, okay? So Microsoft product, then they have Tableau. So many monitoring tools will be there. Again, at the end of the day, the major thing is you need to import the data and show it in. Excel or whatever you want. So that is the major thing. So any monitoring tool is okay. And it is an open source, means any tool can be integrated with anything. So it is up to you man, if you want to use a different tool.
Uh because uh as I asked for the Go programming, but most of our Kubernetes, uh we can go with the Yaml.
Programming, right? Yes, so most of the, I will say ninety nine point nine percent of the manifest files which you will see is written in Yaml.
Then where the actual Python they are asking for, because most of the automation and the requirements which are asking for Python programming. Because I don't understand, because most of the places we are using.
Python has, see, Python has a different world altogether, see. You go for AWS, you go for machine learning, you go for I O T, you go for anything, Python is there. See, like when I started my career in two thousand eight, two thousand ten, everybody want to talk about Java. Okay, whether you are front end, back end, you are doing support, they will ask, do you know Java? It was a common question, everybody was asking. Hundred percent in their company, they will not have work on Java, but everybody was saying, do you know Java? In the interview, they will definitely ask. Nowadays, it has become a trend. Do you know Python? Okay, so.
But in DevOps, most of the cases, what we have looked so far in uh container, managing container, creating the cluster. Writing the manifest file, nowhere we could see that Python, that's why I'm.
Python is not mandatory, man. Python is not at all mandatory. Python is just programming language. Now somebody is from a dot net background. He will say, I need dot net. You write your code in dot net, package it as a Docker container, use it, the flow is remains as it is, nothing changes. And it is not like I am teaching from my wish. If if I have to teach something, I'm taking you to the official documentation. So it is not that, it is going to be something different. So in your company also, when you are working. Here only is the actual thing. Okay, like today, I took you to Helm. So if somebody says that how to install Helm. So you can say, you know, for installing Helm, I have done this. Do you know that there is another way? Yeah, possibly there is another way. But I did it like this and you are not wrong because this is official documentation. So this is a very standard way of doing it. Might be the company where you are giving interview, they might not be using it, but it's a standard way. Some other company is definitely using it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, fine. We meet tomorrow again. We will see how monitoring is done on Kubernetes. And then we will create our own Helm chart and we will deploy it to Helm hub. And then we can see how it works and how everything.
Yeah, so because.
Grafana, uh you, uh you teach us uh how to configure Grafana monitoring tool?
Yes, I will teach you how to configure dashboard, how to send alerts. And.
And sir, there can be a a monitor our API applications.
You can, you can monitor everything with Grafana. I'll teach you tomorrow. Let's park it for tomorrow.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Um, be- because please share yesterday recording because I pinged in two times.
I'll I'll ping you in the group. I'll ping you in the group and share.
Yeah, because I asked a question in the group, as a tourist back, like regarding the, uh what is a master node, if it goes crash like.
You can ping, can, if I think I missed it, can you please ping it again? I'll just answer it.
Yeah, yeah, sure. I need the steps as well for that look.
I I'll tell you, there are people know individually ping me, so I don't save the number and also I don't know which batch. So there is a Docker batch, there is a Kubernetes batch, there is an Ansible Terraform batch, there is a AWS DevOps batch, so I get confused. So please ping me from the group and whatever question you will ask, I'll definitely answer. If I missed it, just remind me.
Okay, sure, sure. I'll ping in the chat, group chat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, because. Uh have you heard like a Valero any tool kind of one? So are we using anywhere?
I I have not heard about anything like that, man.
Okay.
And the Splunk because regarding.
Splunk is a normal generic tool. It it is very much like your Prometheus Grafana. Splunk is normal, nothing extraordinary about that.
Okay, uh because one more thing, have you faced like any E K S cluster or G K cluster, whatever, it is crashed anytime?
If it crashes, then you have to, see, E K S and all will not crash, okay? See, then you have to go to cloud watch logs and you have to find why it has crashed.
No, if we found something, we found like something we done, uh like we we updated E K S version. So if it is crashes, how it goes like.
If it crashes means your control plane is not reachable or you are not able to log in via your control plane. So.
Yes, E K S is. Not reachable, like cluster is already crashed.
Ha, so how it recovers? It will see, E K S will automatically recover because it is a managed solution, so it will automatically recover. You don't have to do anything.
If it is not recovered.
But then you have to go to the cloud watch logs and you have to see what has gone wrong.
Okay, if we found wrong also, like how we can recover?
You have to roll back your changes. Whatever update you are trying to do, you have to roll back that change.
Okay, if we unable to roll back like.
Then you have to specifically create a team capture and show it to me. I cannot. Tell you like there can be hundred reasons for that. I have to specifically, you have to tell me what is the problem, then only I can.
Yeah, the problem is like I done the upgrade like from the E K S.
You you click up, pick and show it to me. You click, click up, pick, show it to me on the group and then I will be able to answer you. And one more thing, Mohammed, to answer your question, tomorrow we will, we will cover Helm and then again we will go to deployment. Okay. Fine, see you then guys. We'll meet tomorrow. Bye bye.